I would like to call the July 27, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to order. May I have a roll call, Mary?
Yes. Figueroa?
Here.
Hade?
Here.
Jallowick?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Redzinski?
Here.
Rego?
Here.
Tingpaw Pong?
Here. And we have a quorum. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As usual, James, please read our Fenton Mission, Beliefs, and Bison Way Statement.
Absolutely. Fenton Mission Statement: To cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Belief Statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion unify our community. School and Hope collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectation to become the leaders in the future.
Thank you, James. I'm going to take a second to just read a statement from the board here. One of, just recently, one of our board members exercised their First Amendment right to free speech and shared a social media post. This action was taken outside of the role of a board member. It was a personal post. And it's not reflective of the opinions or beliefs of the other board members. We want to remind everyone that the Bison Way reflects our district's standing belief system, which is why we read it before all our meetings, just like before here. According to the Bison Way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to the highest expectations to become leaders and innovators of the future. The board will continue to strive to build an anti-bias and anti-racist school district. We will continue to work with everyone in our equity and inclusion journey so that our school is a place where all people feel they belong and are embraced. With that said, Mary, do we have any requests for public comments?
No requests this evening.
Okay, thank you. And let's go to recognitions.
Okay, good evening. We're excited here to have Daniela Trente Doo and Caitlin Hoffing. If you please come forward. So Daniela, the second team All-State in softball, and Caitlin, third team All-State in softball. So unfortunately tonight, Coach Mello could not be here. The other coach, they're all out of town. Coach Mello, as we know, is a very high-energy coach, a lot of enthusiasm. I have his speech, so I'm going to read from it to honor you here tonight. So first off, thank you to the Board of Education for all you do for Fenton. Again, there are apologies that none of the coaching staff could be here this evening to recognize the two All-State athletes. We appreciate you taking the time to recognize these two outstanding young women who are great representatives of Fenton High School. Tonight is well-deserved for both Caitlin and Danny. Coming into this past season, our varsity team was only returning three players from a successful season the year prior. Caitlin and Danny, as returning All-State players, were obviously going to be counted on to be not only our best players, but leaders both on and off the field. These two certainly exceeded our expectations as their performance on the field and their leadership allowed us to finish the season with a record of 19 wins and 16 losses and provided us with an opportunity to compete for a regional championship. While we came up short in that game, Caitlin and Danny never came up short for our program. Caitlin, our leadoff hitter and shortstop, could fill those roles for just about any team around. She batted .449 with a .616 on-base percentage while scoring 50 runs and stealing 37 bases. And she did that and missed seven games, so. What she could have done if she was there for all the, available for all the games. Caitlin heads into next season with a chance to be only our second three-time All-State player. And the only reason she isn't going for a fourth All-State, her freshman year was, the season was canceled. Fenton Fast Pitch and Fenton High School are lucky to have Caitlin. Another round of applause. Now we move on to Danny, who is our number-one pitcher and primarily our three-hitter. Could play for any team in the state. She notched 10 wins in the circle, that's pitching circle, right? While striking out 189 batters and batted .480 with 46 runs batted in and had four home runs. The bigger challenge, well, the bigger the challenge, the better Danny performed in the circle. And to top it off, Danny was right in the middle of our offensive attack. It was always ready to bring Caitlin home when she was on base. Like Caitlin, Danny would also enter next season with a chance to be a three-time All-State player. However, Danny will be graduating early and enrolling at Triton College to join their national qualifying team. While we wish we had her for another season, we are very happy for her and excited to see her represent Fenton Fast Pitch and Fenton High School at the collegiate level next spring. We wish her nothing but the best. Again, these are two young women who are outstanding representatives of Fenton Fast Pitch and Fenton High School. Both come from amazing families, and they are here tonight. How about a round of applause? And the families certainly should be proud of these girls. Thank you again for the opportunity. So why don't we start out with Caitlin? You want to go first?
I wanted to thank the coaches, but they're not here. I'll thank them anyways for always supporting me and teaching me as much as I can, or as much as they could. And I'd like to thank my parents for always supporting me, and I hope they'll do it next year, too. Next year, obviously going to suck a little more because Danny's not going to be here. But I wish you the best of luck, Trente. Okay, I actually wrote mine out because I know I'd forget. So I know the coaches couldn't be here today, and honestly, if it wasn't for Mello, I wouldn't be where I am today. I want to thank all the coaches, Illich and Foz, especially Foz, because she helped the recruiting process a lot because she's very close with the Trente coaches, and it was a nice connection to have. I learned that softball is all about connections, and you have to make a good connection with everyone you meet. Caitlin, these past, like, three years have been absolutely amazing. I know that our freshman year got canceled, but thank you for being a huge mental and moral support on the field for me. And I wish you luck.
We're actually going to take a picture up here with the board. If you go ahead and move forward.
Parents, too? Parents, please? Mom and Dad?
Congratulations again. We get right to informationals.
Thank you. We got a lineup here. First one is Mrs. Ward. With new teacher orientation.
All right, so yeah, we have new teacher orientation. We are going to run it for three half-days, August 8th, 9th, and 10th. This year, we have seven new certified staff members and two new administrators. One of our new administrators is right here, Mr. Richard Lott, who will be...
We're going to meet him, yep.
Yeah, the Director of Special Ed. So a couple of the highlights, we're going to have our students lead the new teachers and administrators on a building tour. We'll have our faculty and members of the staff do some sessions, enter to technology, some of our programming, a little bit about what our initiatives are with professional development. They'll have a lunch with their mentors. On Wednesday, we'll have a breakfast at White Pines, hosted by the Bensonville Chamber of Commerce, which is always very nice, and the teachers always enjoy that. And then, for the first time in a long time, this happened when I started teaching about 20 years ago, and I don't know when it stopped, but we're going to bring back the bus tour of the community. So we asked teachers who live in the area, what are some things that new teachers need to see to get to know the community? So they gave us all of their ideas, and Mr. John Aguilar, who is a Bensonville resident, is going to be the tour guide. He's really excited about that. So grade schools, businesses, you know, kind of the hotspots. So we think that that's going to be really exciting for the teachers to get to know where our kids live.
Don't forget about the Wooddale Restaurant.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, it's all in there. And then the next two days, Thursday and Friday, so August the 11th, all certified staff are back, so teachers are back. And then August 12th is an All-Staff Institute Day. So day one is going to focus on welcoming back our teachers. Sam will kick us off. We'll talk about our new teaching and learning goals. We're going to hear staff, administrator, and student stories, so that's something that we've incorporated. And then we're going to kick off our MTSS program, which you'll hear a little bit about later. But Mr. Jason Madel is leading that, and that's really focusing on intensive interventions to help our students. So we're going to tell our teachers about that, and are very excited. Day two, when we have the whole staff, we're having a keynote by Dr. Lionel Allen, who is a professor at UIC. And we all attended Administrator Academy with him, and he was wonderful. He's going to kick us off with a keynote called "Creating a Culture of Care." We'll get some district updates, strategic plan, equity action plan, and really just get everybody in the mood for starting the year off for hopefully the most normal year we can have. So we're excited about that.
Next slide, Jim. Thank you, Kate. Just a reminder to the board, Wednesday, August 10th, new teachers' breakfast. I know Juliet is attending as well as Kit. If you would like to attend, it's a 7:15, 8:30 event in the morning, White Pines. Just let me know. Some of you guys have told me already that you will be at work, so no big deal. If anything changes, just let us know. One of the things that we're going to do in day two highlights is once again to reinforce to our staff, our North Star, which is our Strategic Plan 2.0. We've done this over and over here at the board level, but it's good for our staff to once again know that. We're going to dive into it, unpack it. As you guys know, there's six strands there: teaching and learning, student life, social-emotional growth, diversity, equity, inclusion, communication, collaboration, and community, and securing the future. All of those strands there will have a topic so that everyone is singing from the same hymnal for the beginning of the school year. Now I'm going to turn it over for the start of the school year. Dr. Benson and Spirit Week.
Okay, thank you very much. We are excited as we approach the beginning of the school year. The first day of student attendance is August the 15th. We're also excited that we have sort of a hybrid schedule that day where freshmen come in from 8:00 to 10:00, and that way they can go from class to class, get to know the building without all the other students around. However, we will have our link crew there, who they're highly involved in the success of our freshman students by being there and supporting them. So that'll be an integral part of the start of the day. And then our sophomores, juniors, and seniors will come in at 10:00, which is a typical start time for Mondays anyway. And then they will run through that late start schedule. So we started this last year. It was successful in that it just gives the freshman a little bit more personalized help that first day. So that's the, and then we have our first week. Our Spirit Week will actually be the second week after we sort of get acclimated. As you can see, we have manic Monday of wearing comfortable PJs. We're optimistic that Mr. Martin and his last year may participate.
Way to go, Bruce. We'll see.
Maybe, okay, all right. And then Tuesday, we have Tropical Tuesday, Wild West Wednesday, and Team Thursday, your favorite sports or college team gear. And then, of course, Fenton Friday, where we share our orange and blue. So it's a great way to kick off the year. Here's some Spirit Week-type pictures from last year, and we're eager to make more memories this year and take more pictures. Don't look too close, but I'm in pajamas there in one of those pictures. But have some fresh pajamas this year to participate. Next slide. Okay, so we've heard this term quite a bit, so we thought we'd just take a few minutes just to emphasize it. But before we even do that, this is, in our strategic plan, is a major point of emphasis. And it's also important to note that this has been an ongoing initiative over the last several years. And we're, you know, we're always constantly retooling and looking at how best to support our students. And especially in light of the pandemic with remote learning, with learning laws, and some more issues that children are facing nowadays, we really want to make sure we have a more systemic approach on how we help kids. So when you hear MTSS, oh, sorry, when you hear MTSS, it's a multi-tiered system of support. This tiered framework uses data, basically focuses on academic and behavioral assessments so we can meet the needs of all of our students. Some key components of MTSS, obviously, like I just said, the academic, the behavioral, the SEL-type support that students may need. And then that fourth prong is attendance, because we know, especially with some of the students missing during the height of COVID, that, you know, you don't attend. Research tells us that you tend to struggle more than those that have more consistent attendance. So it's going to be a major emphasis at the start of the year. You'll hear more and more of that. You'll see that in our communications. So when we talk about a tiered support, this is your basic triangle that you may see. We refer to your Tier 1 basically being your research-based core. This is for your universal, so you're thinking probably 80% of our kids are functioning at a high level. They will need some supports, but not necessarily the targeted support. So, but we do try to blanketly cover everyone in our programming and make sure we have some supports. I'll give you some examples here a little bit. Sorry, not done. Back to Tier 2, which is more of your anywhere from 10% to 15%. They may need some more targeted supports, which we'll go over. And then finally would be your Tier 3, your maybe, your 5%, where they need more of an intensive wraparound-type service. Now, I know you can't read that. Don't expect you to. But what we do is we plug in our own system. We put in various interventions that we share with the staff and our parents that are needing extra support. So for example, that Tier 1, that universal at the bottom of the triangle, things like tutoring, which we have before, after school. Bison Time, which is for everyone, Bison Time Resource. Our Be Real program, which emphasizes positive behaviors. And attendance, your basic phone calls, things like that. And then like a ruler training, universal screeners would fall under the SEL component where in that setting, we put out a survey to students to see what kind of support they may need. And then we work our interventions off of that. Some examples of more Tier 2 approaches would be like our Bison Orange. Let's say a restorative meeting, like if there's a conflict between students where we try to have them see it through each other's eyes. A more trauma-informed, maybe more check-in, check-out type system for someone that needs to see a trusted adult a little bit more. And then groups, you'll see kind of throughout here, which our counseling department and others within our PPS programming will form groups based on the need. For example, it could be a group with freshmen that are struggling academically. Rather than try to program, you're going to try to work with each individual, but if you get a group together and you work on strategies together and supports, a group can be a very powerful way to provide support to kids. And then your Tier 3, in many cases, we have someone perhaps with an IEP. Or if you have an attendance issue, someone that we might have to refer to the county. You know, a younger student that's just not showing up at all, and our home visits and our other interventions, it don't seem to work. So I think it's important to know that based on whatever we see the need is for a particular student, we want to emphasize that we have supports in place. And another big area is looking at the data so you can see, okay, what's really going on here with the student? And then having our teams meet to provide the support that's needed. So we look at the data, and that gets us to where we need to go. Another way to look at it, obviously, we talk a lot about equity. It's a big umbrella. Right under there is MTSS, and then some of your PBIS, SEL, RTI, Response Intervention type of programs. So it's just a good little visual so you can kind of see how it all fits together. Next slide. And then what really, what really is the process there? It's, you know, step one, step two, step three, and then step four. Basically, there's different ways to refer a kid, and then we meet on the kid, and then we provide the intervention. But obviously, we need to see whether intervention's actually having the desired effect, which again is referring back to who we're trying to support. School safety, I wanted to highlight specifically, there was kind of an important, over the summer, and actually not that long ago, that there's a 988 Suicide Prevention/Crisis Line. So we are definitely going to promote this on my letter to families. It's going to be in there. And I know James and many of his communications to the community will highlight that. But basically, there used to be a 10-digit code. So like if you were in crisis, it's sort of clumsy, you know, where's it at? How do I find it? But if we just keep emphasizing, you dial 988, and you go to someone, a live person on the other end of your phone, it's 24/7. And I also want to emphasize, obviously, it could be a suicidal-type situation, but it could just be crisis. It could be a mental health-type situation where someone is really struggling. And so we want to get that information out there. If you look up 988 info, there's all sorts of handouts that we'll start out the year sharing. But pretty important that we emphasize that in a climate where there's issues out there, clearly. The other thing is, we wanted to make another announcement that we'll have what we call Stop the Bleed kits in every classroom. Basically, obviously, with the tragedy in Uvalde and the concept that something could happen in a classroom where it would be nice to have an actual kit in the classroom that can assist a student, we want to make a commitment to this. So even areas like a school vehicle, what if a kid's injured on a school vehicle? We need to think about that. And also wherever we have our AEDs, we also have one of these Stop the Bleed kits because obviously something could happen in a common area. And these are all listed on our crisis plan as far as where those AEDs are listed. So we, so staff would know that, yes, you know, it's there also in case something happens in the hallway and they need some immediate help.
So we can't just call it a first-aid kit?
There's a distinct difference between a first-aid kit and a Stop the Bleed kit. It's not as simple as it used to be. And this is just the new norm, quite honestly. And you see this in train stations, you see this in buildings, this is the future. And don't think of it just in the worst-case scenario, this could be a shop accident. This could be somebody falls through a window. This could be straight-line winds that break windows, and our students are hurt. This is an all-purpose kit, but it's a step above a first-aid kit.
So there'll be...
Is there a training portion to this?
Yes. Let me, first, so like in this kit, there's like a tourniquet in there, a blanket, so it just, you know... Right. I didn't bring like everything that's listed in it, but it's intended to be kind of in case of, you know, someone's... Well, someone's really bleeding, like you said, let's say you have a shop accident.
Multiple gloves, scissors, a marker, a tourniquet, a pressure dressing, some packing. This is for big injuries. This isn't a Band-Aid. This is, and it's all in one simple kit.
I didn't know it was like a material, a material...
Yeah, it's a pressure dressing. No, if you put the quick clot in, and it expires, and these kits don't expire. I've seen these kits. They're really good kits. They've become the norm, unfortunately, in our world. Like one in the trunk of my work car.
I'm glad we have them.
Yeah, so your other question about training, I want to be upfront. So like, this isn't like your typical, like, my finger's bleeding, I gotta... Yeah, right. So, and so we want to be, you know, we want it to be for, honestly, a real emergency. So, you know, there are some videos and stuff that we can share, but it's not going to be an extensive, like, you know, eight-hour training on how to use it. But we do, we will share it with staff. We will have it available with kind of a baseline training on how to use it if needed. So, I'm sorry, go ahead. Was there another question there?
So this would be in classrooms, hallways, just places that are accessible, close by?
Right, like gym areas, those things like that. Yeah, like a shop, obviously, like in a shop area.
So just being, you know, imaginative about what possible situations we could have a need for it. I mean, would it be possible to post a video to the general public, too, our community, just in case no one else is around except a community member? Just something to think about, you know. Sometimes it's not a staff member, it might not be a student. It might be somebody that's at a ballgame or something.
Sam and I are putting out a letter, and we'll put a link to that letter to explain it, and we'll link it also to a how-to-use the kit.
Or like someone's using the building.
Does that sound like...
No, that sounds appropriate.
Sometimes people rent the building, right? And we could probably attach something, letting them know we have this available.
It's actually not a bad thing to do, especially even if they're not in Fenton, but they might, like John was saying, in public somewhere, and all of a sudden this video pops into their head because they saw it, somebody saves a life because of it, so it sounds like a good thing.
I might have missed it, but how many kits did you order?
We were around 80 to 100. I think we just upped it a little bit because we want them in vehicles also. So the order's already in. We're optimistic it'll be here by the start of the year.
Ask for money?
But if we need to order more, if we find a different need. But we looked at all the different rooms and areas that we think would need it.
Was this Esser funds? Was this Esser?
We could try to. I don't know if it would be eligible. We could certainly ask if it would be.
What's the cost?
It's about $50 to $75 a kit. So it's a cost, but we talked about it, and it's like, well, could we just have them in common areas? Could we just have it? I just think peace of mind would be for people would be better, just to, let's just have it.
Low cost to save a life.
Right, exactly.
The most common way I've seen these put out, and again, this is my past life and my current life, is one or two kits per room. my current life, is one or two kits per room and then a bigger kit that can be brought in in the event you need more. That's what we're seeing. You Chicago Union Station just did this. They have the same kit and they have boxes of eight and you just take the bag. But you're talking a large volume of people, similar to what you have here. And, you know, I hope we never need it, but if we need it, I'll be very happy we have it.
Right.
So liability not to is becoming the new norm. AEDs used to be unheard of and now it's the new norm and this is no different. And it's, like I said, people always think the worst, but it could be somebody falls through a window, could be a shop accident, could be a car accident. Our janitor pulls up in a pickup truck in a car accident and claps a tourniquet on somebody and saves their life.
In terms of loss prevention, is there any need to secure them at some point or are
they pretty safe to leave out? How does that work?
Uh, you mean like at the the end of the year? I mean, we'll probably inventory it to see, you know, I we'll probably know if one's ever used to to have a replacement, but, you know, overall, it should be a one-time cause.
I think he's talking stolen.
I mean, the the plan would be to have it in an air, you don't want to hide it somewhere where like a substitute can't find it, but I I would, I I don't anticipate that being an issue.
Some of these have the ability have the ability to get a wall-mount cabinet above the AED or in with the AED. Open the AED, the alarm sounds.
Yeah.
There's ways around it and we can get creative and I'll be happy if you need any. I'm not an expert by no means, but I'm dealing with this every day now.
Yeah.
So if you need some help, advice. And some of the manufacturers sell wall-mount kits and it's just a simple seal, it's just enough to where it can't be picked up, but it's obvious and you'll know when one isn't in the box. So there there's ways around that.
It's a good thought that we got to be mindful that we don't want any of them walking away, but I think for the most part, I think we should be good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Sam.
Yep.
COVID update?
Yes, so we're going to continue to follow the guidance of Public Health Department, CDC, IDPH. Um, you know, we're going to we're going to start the year similar to the way the end of the year. We're going to have shield testing available for staff and students. Masks will be optional as we start the year. So, you know, we're just going to hope for the best that this is going to be a, you know, not not a not an issue like it has been the last few years, but we also want to be prepared just in case we need to, you know, make a change or, you know, increase efforts. So so that's it.
Sounds good. Thanks, Jose. Kate?
AP scores. All right, so our AP scores are in, they always come in at the beginning of July. So this year, we had four hundred and thirty-nine AP tests that were taken by two hundred and sixty students. So we had students that took multiple AP tests, which is awesome. This year, twenty Fenton students earned five, so that's an increase from last year. Nine of those twenty were graduating seniors, so the class of twenty twenty-two, but eleven of those are current students, so sophomores and juniors.
Wow.
So we really want to recognize two students who earned more than one five. They both got two fives this year, so Jayden Golds and Alexander Rusnick, both of them will be seniors this year, current juniors. Yeah, so that's really awesome. So we're really happy about this, really excited. The past couple of years with AP have been kind of crazy with pandemic, online, offline, those types of things. So we're really happy and we're back on the upswing.
Thank you, Kate. Referendum update, the June election, the referendum was unsuccessful, a forty to sixty vote split, yes to no. We'll try again November eighth, twenty twenty-two, general election because of our school building's needs renovation, modernization, and expansion. The facilities are old and outdated, we cannot prolong to wait any longer. Every year we wait to renovate, modernize, and expand, the more expensive the project will become. Our students deserve better. We will readjust both the cost and the scope of the builder plan for the November eighth election. I think a good way to look at this is we heard the voters. Okay, we heard the voters, we're going to reduce the cost in the plan as well as the cost to the taxpayers. Fenton is putting skin in the game and reducing taxpayers' impact by contributing ten million dollars in district reserves. We're reducing the scope of the plan but still able to include the community communities responsibilities priorities, including renovating our school to make it safer for students and teachers, modernizing our classrooms to for the twenty-first century learning, and expanding our programming and career learning spaces. What is the cost of the reduction? It's quite significant. We're moving from one hundred and twenty-nine point seven million to ninety-nine million. What's the annual impact for a home of two twenty-nine per assessor? At one twenty-nine, the cost would be three hundred and eighty-two per year. With this lower price of ninety-nine million, it would be two hundred and eighty-five of a payback of twenty-five-year schedule. Scope of the project remains the same at a reduced level. Once again, it's the project remains the same, but at a reduced level to renovate, modernize, and expand. We're going to reprioritize our project. What you could see there is reduction on the scope of of the of the project as well as the prices. That first column says June at one hundred and twenty-nine point seven million dollars, taking down to ninety-nine point ninety-nine two six oh price there for November. Fending funding contribution, Fenton will allocate ten million dollars of fund balance towards the building referendum plan, recognizing that this would decrease our fund balance reserves from a slightly over ten months worth of expenses to about eight months worth of expenses. The recommendation comes with a reaffirmed commitment that the district maintains balanced budget in the future. What are the next steps? At the discussion action item this evening, we recommended the board approve the resolution providing for the requiring the submission of proposition of issuing school-building bonds to the voters of the district at the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election. That is the end of the report. Are there any questions? I know that was quite long, started at the beginning of the year, all the way to the referendum update. Seeing none, we're going to turn, go over to the district equity report with Mike Barago.
Oh.
Go ahead, Patty.
Is there anything that we should share in this public forum that we had talked about in there?
Well, there's going to be a chance for discussion items to vote, but we we can certainly bring bring anything to light, yeah. But there's going to be another opportunity in the discussion action items.
Okay, all right.
And we also could update Carrie and John, the facility.
The report.
Yep, facility report, finance report.
Yeah.
So this is the district equity report with Mike Barago.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Barago and this is your equity report. Here are commemorative observances and holidays for the month of June and July. Our diversity, equity, inclusion work never stops and the month of June and July took care of business. On June fourteenth, we hosted Equity Champion and State Superintendent of Education, Dr. Carmen Ayala, for a brief visit. Dr. Ayala visited summer school classes and spoke with our students and toured the rest of Fenton. When learning about our equity journey, Dr. Ayala described Fenton as a diamond emerging. She is impressed with our accomplishments and looks forward to receiving our equity journey continuum narrative. On June twentieth and twenty-first, we hosted our district equity leadership team retreat where we developed our Equity Action Plan two point O. Our retreat was led by Dr. Event Dubiel and a strong showing of our administrative team. Our EAP two point O is designed in parallel with our strategic plan two point O and will be implemented in a span of three years. I will provide an overview of that plan at the end of this report. On June twenty-second and July fifth, Dr. Dubiel provided DEI training for the remaining staff members that have not gone through the required training. For staff members who were unable to attend the June and July opportunities, they are signed up for one Thursday evening a month throughout the school year. In addition, newly hired staff members will join a cohort for monthly DEI training offered during the day throughout the school year. A group of teachers and admins led by Ms. Ranjana Rajendran finished a book study on Cultivating Genius by Goldie Muhammad. The premise of the book is about igniting the genius that is already within all students through an equity lens. Big shout-out to Ms. Michelle Rodriguez and Tara Chavez for attending Northern Illinois University's Social Justice Camp. The camp featured keynote speakers, including Goldie Muhammad herself. We look forward to learning from them when we debrief in August. And speaking of August, we have a few events to look forward to. Our admin team retreat is on August first and second. At the retreat, we will be engaged in a leadership PD focused on equity. Our sessions will be led by Lisette Jacobson and Maurice McDavid. Lisette and Maurice are principals in the West Chicago School District Thirty-three and are hosts of a successful podcast called Black, Brown, and Bilinguine. This time will be valuable to all of us as we grow as a team and kick off the school year. Finally, I'd like to provide an overview of our Equity Action Plan two point O. With EAP two point O, here is one item that have remained the same, the five all-encompassing strands drive our work. Systems, teaching and learning, student voice, climate and culture, professional learning, and family and community as agency. In terms of our action plan, the following are the focuses within each strand for the upcoming school year. The system strand will be focused on increasing diversity of our staff and starting the implementation of ISB's Equity Impact Analysis Toolkit. The toolkit is designed to help standardize the analysis approach when new policies, programs, practices, and budget decisions are being made. The teaching and learning strand plans on initiating a multi-year adoption of the culturally responsive teaching standards. They also plan on continuing our efforts of implementing grading systems and policies that are equitable and research-based through our grading committee. They look to continue our multi-year effort of providing access to programs of study consisting of industry embedded courses with access to authentic experience experiences within career settings, dual credit, and industry certifications and credentials. Finally, they plan on evaluating and strengthening student intervention systems to ensure success for all students under the MTSS umbrella. The student voice, climate, and culture strand looks to sustain and bolster a diverse student-led equity leadership team. They look to create opportunities to acknowledge student success to create equitable recognition for all student achievements. And finally, they look to continue to promote and expose restorative justice to all stakeholders. The professional learning strand is planning to continue the great work that was started last year in promoting participation in equity-related professional learning opportunities. They also want to continue to direct all staff to identify personal goals in regards to equity knowledge and/or social justice advocacy throughout the school year and provide support. Lastly, they look to continue to provide multiple opportunities for professional learning and ensure outside presenter is brought in to bring in fresh perspectives and affirm our work. Last but not least, the family and community as agency strand looks to continue to grow our equity advisory committee to cultivate our connections with the community. They also look to develop a feedback form for parents and community members to inform culturally responsive training that we use within the within the school. Lastly, they look to leverage existing technology to provide equitable access to school-based communications. As you can see, our Delt team has amazing plans that will ultimately meet the needs of our staff, students, and parents where they need us and create an environment that values the diversity of our students regardless of race, ethnicity, ability, complex immigration statuses, religion, and sexual orientation. That concludes our equity report. Until next time, thank you and have a great day.
Next one is our community annual report. This is a great way to communicate about community toward all of our stakeholders. This is the third annual community report. It's involves every year, all of our residents who live in Bensonville, Wooddale receives one. And I'll just quickly go over this, as we spoke about a little bit with with Rick Cambick at the last board meeting. It was in the works, this is the finished copy. This was delivered mid-June, right before the referendum. If we turn the page real quick for the second page right there, first page right here is basically a summary of the referendum about the scope and the cost. This next one here, third page, is really a celebration in regards to what we have done this summer. The first one's the Fenton nine-one-one ceremony identifies the community, as you know, they have a football game, they have the Chicago Bears there, we have first responders as well. What a fantastic evening. Then also, as a highlight, if you look at that bottom left here, we were one of the first school districts to offer pediatric COVID. You know, we were also one of the first districts to offer COVID vaccination as well. And we continue to host food pantries both in Wooddale and for for Wooddale and Bensonville residents. Next couple pages is really a celebration of our of our students. We have two more state champions with Carissa and Evelyn there. Top left, they also have all-state runners as well as third place in wrestling statewide and regional championship soccer. We have done what's different about this year, we took all of our state-bound competitor students there, athletes, and listed them them there on the fourth page. We needed to celebrate the girls' basketball team because they set a new winning record here, a total of twenty-two wins. Exciting, as well as when the Chicago Bears came out here this summer, last summer, and hosted a one-on-one mentoring and competition two-day event there. Next page, we have Anna Michael earning an International Music Honors Award. We also have two students, Sochi and Michelle, being a national honors for the college board. And we have Corinne going to go to Washington University here as well. We listed all of our state school scholars, the bottom left on page six. We also wanted to give shouts out to our staff. Paul Welsh becomes the president-elect of IACAC, which is the council board organization of Illinois. On the bottom left here, we continue to grow our career pathway. We do have a relationship with Quest Diagnostic in Wooddale, which is a biomedical.
Which is a biomedical, sorry, Jim, biomedical organization, company in Wooddale. We also wanted to celebrate three groups of people. First one is Matthew Lynch for all of his great work with football, bringing in Nike camps here as well as the Chicago Bears. He won an award in regards to public relations. We also wanted to acknowledge our Fenton Counseling Department for they won the team's category in counseling enhanced the two families have in Fenton with their strong approach to a new law requiring all high school seniors to complete the free application for federal student aid, which is FAFSA for financial aid. And lastly, we recognize Joe Velez, Director of the Bensonville Park District, for his wonderful collaboration for the last five years. We have worked together from the vaccination events to a carnival to utilization of the park district facilities and just a great person to work with. And lastly, celebrated the last page is a celebration of why we're here at Fenton, which is the students. So another another great way to communicate, which is part of our strategic plan. Next slide. Lastly, we received four FOIA's, two of them regarding the referendum and one in regards to the facilities audit, which took place about two years ago. Lastly, we had a statewide FOIA in regards to what are administrators' benefits. Those have all been resolved and submitted. Next slide. I'll stop there. I know that was a lot, okay? Any questions, suggestions? And we'll get to the referendum updates too a little later, Patty. That's the end of our report.
Okay, great. So thanks for that. Next, we'll go into the consent agenda and all the requests. You guys have any questions? Do we have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Can we meet our new special ed coordinator?
Once it is approved, once you guys approve it. Yes, yeah, Rich has been waiting there nice patiently for about two hours now. We're going to get you approved first.
All right, so without any other questions, let's get to it. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Leo. May I have roll call, please?
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, motion passed. And so next we go into discussion items, action items.
Sure. Okay, just want to take this moment to introduce our new special ed director, Rich Watts here. Come on up here, Rich. Say a few words for us, introduce yourself.
Of course, yes. So first of all, thank you. I'm excited to join this team. Everyone I've met so far has been super pleasant and even on the parking lot on the way in, I met some in front of the community. I'm just excited to meet everybody and get started to help our students. I'm just excited to meet everybody and get started to help our students. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome, family.
Thanks, Rich.
Employment, okay, so we met him. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent employment agreement as presented?
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Sylvia. Roll call, please?
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you, Board.
Welcome, Board. Next is our resolution for providing and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school building bonds to the voters of the district at the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two general election. The Board is in consideration of resolution providing and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school building bonds to the voters of the district at the general election to be held on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two. The proceeds of the bonds would be used to improve the site of and renovate, alter, repair, and equip the Fenton High School Building, including installing school safety and emergency response systems and equipment repairing and replacing ventilation, plumbing, electrical infrastructure, increasing classroom capacity, improving classroom lighting and technology, renovating programming and career learning spaces, mitigating indoor flooding with the drainage improvements, and increasing accessibility with Americans with Disabilities Act compliance measures. The Finance Committee has recommended a maximum amount of bonds to be set forth in the ballot of ninety-nine million. Is there any Board discussion? This is where we can deliberate. Questions, you guys? Maybe we can update the public on the Finance Committee a little bit?
At the meeting we discussed, the finance meeting, some of the returns from the election and not a lot of information has been released at this time, but what was provided was pretty much, you know, something lesser at this time would be more palatable for the potential of trying to get this passed at the November eighth election. And that more information would be coming, but possibly because this is an election year, it may be much, much later as far as more detailed information, but what was provided it was pretty clear.
John, do you have some comments you'd like to share with us?
No, if you saw the earlier meeting, you saw all the debate, you saw the information we have. I can't speak for the whole Board, but speaking for myself, the issues aren't going to go away. They have to be resolved. My personal feelings are, we need to go for the full amount, but my personal feelings can sway me. I have to go with the, I have to go with the facts, the data. I think that's a better way to phrase it. And to be honest, you look at what's happening, the public can't afford that amount. So I think we've come up with a compromise. It's not that we don't need the money we asked for, we need it, but we understand that the public can't afford it. I mean, I think that's really what it boils down to. And the dollar figure we came up to is as low as we could go to give the taxpayers a good project, a fair project, still meet the goals as laid out by the community and all of our outreach, and accomplish something to where we're not kicking the can down the road in ten years. In my opinion, in my mind, from what I heard, we're looking at a twenty-year project here, the return on this investment, maybe twenty-five if we do it right. And I think we have the right staff, we have the right guidance, the audit speaks for itself, we can't not do something, it's just not the right thing. Every year we wait, this is going to get more and more expensive and more and more of a problem, and I, we have to do what we have to do, we have to do the right thing, and I honestly feel this is the right thing. We heard what the voters said, we see what the economy says, this is a number we can work with. This still gives us a quality product at the end, and it is what it is. The facts are out there, and you know, our staff is available for questions, and just tour our building, you'll see why we're doing this. The front of the building looks beautiful, but let's take in the back, and you're going to realize how much work there truly is to do in this building beyond trying to keep it running. We have to fix the problem, and this is the only way to do it.
Thank you, John.
I would also like to add, as we heard in the discussion, that the district will contribute ten million dollars of fund balance to help with the cause and to reduce the tax burden on our voters.
And I also think that the public needs to understand that we did a very thorough facility assessment, and that if they want to see what is really going on behind the, you know, the beautiful front, that they need to come in and see it firsthand to really understand the need for this. And the investment, it's an investment in our community.
Listening, listening to the taxpayers is absolutely necessary and important, and as, you know, we can see what our faculty and our students go through in our building. I just invite anybody that has a question to schedule a tour to see, you know, what we see and what we notice. And we listened, and we definitely want to avoid this to be a maintenance job, you know, this needs to be, you know, not only a maintenance, but an update, and you know, this is a fair figure, especially having ten million of the district's money. So with that said, would you guys like to chime in on anything else?
I'd like to share, one of the things that we did discuss with the team was, the numbers are based on what the taxpayer will pay is based on your home's assessed value and not your market value. So when you're keying in that number to see what it's going to cost you over the twenty-five years, base it on your assessed value of the home. And you can find that information on the assessor's website.
Yep, and that'll probably, we'll make sure we communicate that accurately, and there is a big difference between market value and assessment value, so if you Google "do page assessor's office," you'll punch in your address, you'll find that number.
And in regards to the calculator we have on our webpage, we heard it loud and clear that the Board wants more, a better direction, friendlier direction in regards to completing that calculator, the tax calculator of how much the referendum will have an impact on the household. And if any of our audience watching here would like, needs assistance to utilize that calculator, please let, stop by my office, Dr. Benson, our principal there, definitely, we're here to help.
Okay, with that said, we're going to be voting on, getting on the ballot, so let me go back to, should I read that again, or are we good on that? We just have a, okay, so may I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing not to exceed ninety-nine million of bonds to the voters of the district at the November eighth general election?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. And may I have a roll call, please?
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, and motion passed unanimously. Thank you, guys. Next would be the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three tentative budget.
All right, thank you very much. So we have the tentative budget presented for the Board tonight. I know you've gotten a lot of information ahead of this meeting as well with more detail, so I'll just kind of recap the highlights of it. But I kind of wanted to start out with the next slide, Jim, with kind of the mechanics of the budget and how it's put together, and then we'll get into more specifics of the activity and funds and initiatives. So the legal requirements is kind of laid out there, we're preparing an tentative form which you're reviewing tonight. It's available to the public thirty days prior to adoption. That will certainly happen, public hearing with public notice, and we historically have done that on the same evening that the budget adoption happens, the hearing, so that'll happen in September, that's the recommendation. We need to adopt it no later than September thirtieth, that's like state statute, and then we submit it to the State Board after it is adopted by our Board. So factors that impact the budget, and the Board should keep in mind that many of these things that you're approving in the budget, or we hope that you approve in the budget, are based on, have been, already been approved actually throughout the year, last year and even this year. So, you know, for example, the staffing plan, the Chromebooks, textbooks, all those things the Board has already taken action on that are included in the budget here, so I just kind of, I think you probably all know that, but I just wanted to remind you of all that. But some of the factors that impact the budget, the fund balance, property tax levy, as we know, the property tax levy will be increasing by a greater amount than it ever has when we filed the levy in the fall, projected enrollments, staffing and benefits, collective bargaining agreements, we have three of those, capital projects, infrastructure, long-term revenue expenditure projections, and any deficit spending, our reduction, budget reduction plans. We have eight funds that we maintain, the bolded ones, the Ed Fund, Operations and Maintenance, Transportation, Municipal Retirement, and Working Cash are what we coined the operating fund, so what the, what it needs, the district needs to operate is the operations of the district, the teacher salaries, support staff, busing, all those types of things are considered operating funds and fall within those bolded funds that I just outlined. And the other funds are just special purpose funds, so any debt service that we have are specifically for that intention. So the payoff of debt, for example, or a capital projects, project would need to come out of that fund to be accounted for in that manner. And this is all driven by the state program accounting manual and the state budget form, so we follow that form as required. There's the operating funds on the next slide, and these are, I just emphasize those because those are the funds that are all subject to the property tax cap, I think you're probably all familiar with that, so whatever the CPI is in the previous year, December CPI is, you're limited by that, plus new property, so just to emphasize that. And then the revenue sources on the next slide, local sources, property taxes, real estate taxes, replacement taxes, that personal property replacement taxes, is that CP, PRT, student and other fees, and interest on investments, that hasn't been so great lately, but it is ticking upwards, so that's good. The state sources are evidence-based funding, EBF, formerly General State Aid. We're kind of in tier four, so really our state aid has been flat for many years now, three, four years, and that'll continue to be in that manner unless something dramatically changes at the state level, but that's how the funding formula works. Mandated categorical payments, the biggest source there is the transportation, state aid, and then we do, there are some other small categorical grants that we get, but the biggest one would be the transportation piece. And then the federal piece, we get a number of different federal sources, Title One, Two, Three, IDEA Grant, the Perkins Grant, ESER, which will go away at varying times, but ESER One, Two, and Three have a limited life, and then our National School Lunch Program, those are the major federal sources.
I'm sorry, could you go back to the previous revenues real quick? There's been, so part of the feedback that I received from community members regarding the referendum is that, you know, the number is eighty percent of people's property taxes are already coming to us, and I think maybe we can take a moment here to clarify that. So eighty percent of our revenue budget comes from property tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
Approximate?
Eighty percent of our local funding, yes.
Right, so it's not my property taxes, eighty percent of that's going to Fenton?
No, no.
So that's very clear, we need to set that straight.
Yes, yep.
Eighty percent of our revenue comes from property tax, number one. Number two is, we use that for just running the building, in addition to having reserves to make sure we can run the building for either ten months, and you know, after this will be eight months if our referendum passes, is that correct?
Right, operating the district, capital improvements, all those types of things, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But that's a good clarification with the eighty percent, I can see why you call that out. Types of expenditures, and this again follows the state budget form, the instructional programs, which obviously are their teachers, and teacher age programming, support services and administration, our support services would be our guidance counselors, social workers, of that nature, psychologists, operations and maintenance, or our custodial staff, to pay the salaries of the custodial staff, as well as the maintenance of the building, utility costs, things like that. Technology, Chromebooks, our technology infrastructure, our servers, I think Mr. Benson's going to talk a little bit about that later tonight. Transportation is our busing program, and our bus drivers that we own and operate, our capital projects, infrastructure needs, and then our debt service payments. And then the objects or categories, but they're coined objects within the state budget form, so we have the salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay dues, fees, and other, and then tuition, outside tuition that is. So some of the key budget drivers, revenues in the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three budget, fiscal year, property taxes are projected to increase three point three percent. Local revenues are down due to the replacement taxes, investments in student fees are projected right now at a ten point two percent reduction. You might remember that the personal property replacement taxes were about a million and a half dollars over, more than what we had anticipated last year. We did amend the budget to reflect that higher number. We got about three point eight million dollars in personal property replacement taxes last year, which is significantly more than what we normally get, and that's happened across the state for the most part. We did, at this point in time, budget seventy-five percent of that going forward until there's better numbers released from the Illinois Department of Revenue, but we're at seventy-five percent of that three point eight million dollars that's included in the budget, and that falls in the education fund and the IMR Social Security Fund. Evidence-based funding, as I said, General State Aid, that's held flat, other state aid is an eighteen point eight percent decrease. That will be updated, as most of these things will be updated by the time we do the final budget, but we haven't completed the transportation state aid yet, that's due the middle of August. Once we know that and submit that, we'll know, have a better idea what our state aid's going to be, and we'll update that number at that time, it's held flat at this point. Our federal sources, Title Grants, ESER, Perkins, a thirty, almost a forty percent decrease. That's really driven by, Title One is lower than anticipated normally, we expect that to go up somewhat, but our initial number is lower than what it's been the past several years. We will have some carryovers, so once we submit our final expenditure reports for that, we'll have a better idea what that carryover looks like, and hopefully that number will go up. The ESER funds, ESER Two was that seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar bucket of money. The majority of that was used on some building initiatives, air quality improvements, the flexible furniture that we purchased last year, those expenses have gone away, that was, we spent about six hundred thousand dollars of that entire grant, we'll budget the rest this year, but that expense is not here. It's, that money's been spent, so that's really what's driving that decrease, the lower Title One dollars and the lower ESER funds. So overall, the projected operating fund decreases five point five percent. And on the expenditure side, and again, this is across the board on operating funds, salaries at three and a half percent, and these are all really dictated by the collective bargaining agreements or previous approvals by the Board of Education for this year. Benefits at five point four percent, purchase services two point four percent, supplies ten point four, equipment a hundred and one point six percent, that seems like a higher number percentage, but it's a relatively small budget, and then tuition at fifteen point two percent. That's always a little bit difficult to predict, not knowing where, you might have some move-in kids or placements that you weren't anticipating, so we want to be, have an adequate budget to cover the costs of any unexpected things there. So our expenses for, under the operating funds are at four point four percent in the tentative budget.
What is, like, tuition, is that a fifteen percent increase from?
Yeah, and this is all measured against last year's activity, so just, when you compare it to the budget, it's not quite as big as what the activity was. The budget was, we came in under budget. The budget was, we came in under budget, so it's, you know, it's all measured against the activity. But thanks for reminding me of that, that's a good thing to ensure that everybody's aware of that.
That's tuition spending.
Right, tuition, yes.
For special.
Yeah. So some of the initiatives in the budget this year, the strategic plan 2.0, Mr. Antangels talked quite a bit about that, you've heard some things earlier this evening. Technology enhancements, as I said, Dr. Benson will talk, Dr. Batson, excuse me, who you can talk about it too if you'd like to say. Talk about the server replacement. MTSS initiatives, Dr. Benson talked about that. Fitness center equipment, another one that the board approved, and that, we informed the board would be paid over two fiscal years, so we paid for half of it last year, we'll pay for the other half this year. We're going to bring the board a recommendation to purchase two buses, so that'll happen next month. And then our food service initiatives, we've expanded our lunch serving times and added an additional fourth lunch period. So those are some of the more notable initiatives in this year's budget. ESER initiatives, I know you're all anxious to hear what's happening there. Our MTSS coordinator, we will fund that with ESER funds. Our director of post-secondary pathways and DL, CTE, Ms. Papa Nicklow is taking over that role, a portion of her salary we are going to include in the ESER grant. The assistant principal, a portion of her salary will be included in the grand, the student activity portion. We'll continue with this SCL counselor that was included last year, the social worker as well, the learning lab supports will continue, and then we expect to bring some further air quality improvement, improvements that will not infringe on any other potential future work to improve those items as well with ESER funds.
So that's, you're in conjunction with our architects on?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. So the ESER budget right now, as it stands, is about 46% less than the budget last year. And again, that's really driven by the furniture, but we expect that number to go up by the final budget when it's presented in March, or September, excuse me. So overall, the operating fund revenues, what does that look like in terms of the numbers? We broke this out by, the revenues are on this page in blue, are this year's budgeted numbers for local, state, and federal sources. Local is at $30,656,949, state 2.3 million, 1.6 million in federal, and $34,607.70 is the total. So that comes to about 2.7% less with local funding, 4% less with the state funding, about 40% less with the federal funding. So overall, it's about a 5.5% decline across the operating funds with respect to revenues. When looking at the, and these are, again, the operating funds are the five funds, we talked about the core funds that operate the district with. We've listed all the objects or categories of sources of spending. On the top line there again, in the blue is salaries, benefits, all across the board, ending with that $32,996,910, which is a 4.4% increase. The salaries are at 3.5% and benefits are at 5.4%. Supplies, as I mentioned, are down 10.4, that's due to the furniture. Equipment includes those buses I had mentioned, that's why that number's up, that percentage. Tuition, as I mentioned, is up because of some unknowns. And then the non-capital equipment, that's where our fitness equipment would fall into that category, so that's why that's up that 43%. And then we get into the specific funds, so I only called out the ed fund and the O&M fund, those are our two biggest funds. I didn't want to take too much of your time. But anyhow, the budget at the top line there again, in blue, the local, state, and federal sources totaling $29,517,421, and that's about a 6.6% decline from the previous year's activity. Locals down 3%, we mentioned about the replacement taxes. The other piece that kind of drove that a little bit was we got a bigger port percentage of our property taxes in June than we normally would have gotten, so we almost got 52% of the taxes. So that boosted up our tax receipts in June, and that'll drop it down this year because we got more last year. So that's the levy, how it kind of plays out into the two fiscal years. State aid, we already talked about the reduction there with the flat state aid and what that is happening or not happening for that matter. And then the federal aid is down due to the ESER and Title I grants. So on the expense side, and that was the revenues, so just to clarify, so the expenditures were at, the salaries are at that 18.3 million. Benefits, sorry about the small print there, just trying to fit it in the box. Purchase services at two, just over 2 million, 2,085. Supplies, 822,000, equipment 211,000, tuition is at 2.9 million, non-cap is 155,500, and then totaling 27,714,949. And that's a 3.7% increase all across, across those various categories of spending. Salary and benefits again, 3.3 and 5.4%. This is just specifically in the ed fund, just to emphasize that. And then when we look at the operations and maintenance fund, local, state, and federal, we only get local and federal sources here, and typically it's, it's really, you're behind in a little bit, operation and maintenance fund? There you go. We do not get state aid in the operations and maintenance fund. Normally, we don't get federal aid, but this is some ESER funding, so we budgeted for some projects and supplies of 275,000, that's why that's up that 56%. So it's 2,739,989 is the total budget, about a 3.6% increase in revenues. And then on the expense side, salaries, benefits, and so on in the blue at the top there. You know, the budget, when we budget the salaries, obviously it includes the custodial, the grounds, the maintenance folks. It also includes some overtime amounts, special purpose activities, things like that. We do budget a certain amount, obviously, to cover those events that happen throughout the year.
Can you go back one?
Sure. The revenues?
Yeah, so the, like, the federal, that's the ESER?
Yes.
And what is that being used for? Is that, is that building maintenance?
It'll be building maintenance, and then some PPE supplies and other supplies that are, fall within that eligible category for ESER spending. But we hope to use some air quality improvement dollars, that's our objective, is to use it towards those initiatives.
Thank you.
Sure. So salaries, benefits, of course, corresponding benefits that go along with the salaries. The, you know, it's a relatively flat budget, it's showing all the way over 2,857,213, a 7.9% increase. Again, that's compared to the activity, but if you looked at the budget, and that was in your budget documents that we, I shared last week, I mean, it's a relatively flat budget. So we do put some placeholders in there for anticipated expenses that may happen, emergency, you know, fixes, and as I said, some overtime dollars that are budgeted typically, just to have that as expenses, we're not quite sure how they're going to materialize in the end.
Where does utilities fall in the?
Supplies.
Oh.
Yeah, so electric, gas, water, all that falls under supplies.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good question.
So the tentative budget summary, I know you've seen this, this is kind of the recap sheet of the, you know, beginning balance plus the revenues, less expenditures gives you your variance or your deficit or surplus. So if we take the education fund, and we're looking at the operating funds on this page, we have our beginning balance of that $23,745,634. We had our revenues of $29,517,421, less our expenses of $27,714,949. We end with a variance, a positive variance or surplus of 1.8 million, with an estimated funding balance, estimated ending fund balance of $25,548,106. And that happens across each fund, we've kind of laid that out in terms of the ending fund balance. The operations and maintenance fund, there's a modest shortfall there of 117,000, but we've got enough fund balance to cover that. Transportation, as we've said in the past, that, you know, the state aid has not really kept pace with the expenses, so, you know, we've, we've struggled in that fund a little bit trying to balance that budget. There is a shortfall of 484,000, we'll end with $128,000 estimated ending fund balance. IMR Social Security, we're doing okay in that fund, we're going to have a positive variance of 399,000. And then working cash, right now we have no expenditures planned. Last year, you may recall, we had a transfer, a permanent transfer from working cash to the transportation fund. We are not anticipating that for this upcoming year. So overall, the subtotals for the operating funds, all the way to the right, the estimated ending fund balance are at $33,342,627. And then continuing on the next page are the non-operating funds. So this is all the funds and the remaining operating, non-operating funds, debt service, where we pay our outstanding bonds that we have. Life safety, there's really not much happening there, it's a minimal balance that we just carry forward. Capital projects, these are just some outstanding contractor payments that we've not been billed for, that we continue to budget for. And then the total, all funds total, all in, all eight funds are the estimated ending fund balance of $33,828,887. And the variance, if you add in all the funds, are that 1 million, if you could go back for one sec, Jim, 1,574,221. So there's our positive surplus against, across all funds.
Good job, Jim.
And then just to kind of make, maybe, maybe I should have started with this a little more succinctly, the overall, all funds, we look at that, revenues are down 6.4% or $2.4 million. I know that seems like a lot, but it's really because of the grants and the replacement taxes. Expenditures are up 3.3%, but we are projecting an estimated surplus variance of $2 million as of today in the tentative budget. And then this chart just shows the comparison of revenue expenditures from 2015 to 2023, a projection obviously for the '23 and the pre-audit for 2022, but pretty much, you know, across the screen, our revenues have exceeded or been right at the expenses for those years that are depicted in the screen here. And anything prior to 2022 are budgeted numbers, or audited numbers, I should say. And then our fund balance history, just to kind of show you how that's changed over the course of, since 2013, over a 10-year period. You know, we've been on the uptick since 2018, you know, 8.4 months, all the way up to a pre-audit number of 11.2 months in the '22 fiscal year. So that's across all of our funds and the projected fund balance ending this past year. So that is my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Sorry for going so fast, but I know, didn't want to dwell too long on things.
Yeah, please slow down next time.
Although I did notice a big smile when they introduced Bruce that budget, because like, this is your last budget for us.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
So expend, you know, spending's up a little bit.
So that fund balance is where that 10 million we're going to pull from?
That's right.
So that'll take us down to eight months instead of 11 months?
Yeah, based on what we know today, yes.
Any further questions?
Notice when you do your expenditures for this current year, for the educational ones where, for the supplies were down. When you say supply, education supply, can you give a little more?
For this past year?
Yeah. When you say supplies, I immediately think of classroom.
Yeah, um, let's see. Yeah, the ed fund, we were down, just looking at the ed fund. I think off the top of my head, Carrie, I think it's just some activities just didn't materialize. I don't want you to think that, supplies for the classroom supplies, we, that has been adequately, you know, provided to all our classrooms, so we haven't shorted anybody any, you know, supplies that they need to, you know, do their job and for students to be supported, so it wasn't that. There's probably a couple of things that just didn't materialize due to some contingency that just didn't happen, that's probably the biggest thing, but I can get more clarification for it. I don't have it on this sheet in particular, but.
Carrie will give you more information tomorrow, Bruce and I will look into it.
Any other questions, everybody? We're good? Let's vote on it. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approved the 2022-2023 tentative budget as presented and placed it on public display in the district office? It is very recommended that the board schedule a public hearing at 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 28th of this year, 2022, prior to adoption of the final budget. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Sylvia. And Leo, second? Thank you. Can I get a roll call, Mary?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, a motion passed. Next, we'll go into the equipment recycling and disposal list.
Good evening, just real quick, this was the result of quite a bit of cleaning out of some areas this summer. It includes a mix of technology equipment, some old engines in the CTE area, some old camera equipment and recording equipment that used to be used in a TV studio. Much of this stuff is either extremely old, or in the case of the cameras and things, they were donated in the first place and are probably originally, you know, 15, 20 years old and well outdated. Unlike our prior recycle list, we don't expect to get any revenue out of these, we hope that we can just dispose of this. There's some furniture and some odds and ends from our preschool program that'll be donated, so those will get some use, but the rest of the stuff will be either sold for scrap or disposed of in some way. So happy to answer any questions on any of those.
Do we incur any cost for the disposal of some of these items?
We're hoping not, there's probably a little bit of residual value, for example, in the engines, maybe in the metal that's there that might offset any additional cost. A lot of the times, a lot of these companies will come pick up recycling things, that, knowing that they'll get some residual value out of something, so they'll come for free and pick up the other items that might not have, or might cost them a little bit to dispose
This is an annual thing, every year we do this?
It's about every year, we just did one about six months ago, but that was a group of Chromebooks, we actually got, they were older Chromebooks, I think we got between $3,000 and $4,000 out of those eventually, you know, offset by a bunch of things that were in there that were not of value that they had to dispose of, so, you know, typically we get something out of it, probably not this time.
Yeah, I know this possibly is a yearly thing, but, and I don't know about you guys, but I've been charged recently for disposal of some electronic equipment just at my home with the moving, and I was just curious, is it a carryover, a similar effect with?
Yeah.
With here?
Yeah, so far.
It was a shock to me.
Yeah, in my, in my history, I've never had to actually pay for somebody to do that because there's always been some other things that might have some value that goes along with them.
Any other questions? Let's go to both, thank you. May I have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education approves the disposal of the attached list of old and obsolete equipment that is no longer useful to the district?
So moved, second.
Thank you, Patty, thank you, Juliette. And may I have a roll call?
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, and motion passed. Next is our discussion only on technology servers.
Yeah, this is something, James and I were discussing this, we thought it would be helpful to bring it to your attention, we don't do this very often, and it's a relatively large price tag, but yet it's under the threshold that really needs a, a vote on, or any kind of motion or anything from a Board perspective. These were budgeted, this was actually a delayed project from before, but in a nutshell, we're purchasing some replacement network servers that go in our room back here. The current ones are subs, I would say substantially past normal lifetime, they were here before the construction was done up front, and withstood.
Windows 98?
All the, it's not, maybe not that bad. But there, there's, they were, they've done very well, and we've been able to keep them under a service contract and whatnot, but that won't happen for a long time. We aren't really looking to expand or upgrade, because we're really been, we've been pretty stable in terms of the systems that we serve on these, but it'll just be newer technology. The, the price tag on these is about $22,000, so it's under the 25,000 threshold, we're getting them through a consortium purchase agreement, so they've already been bid in other ways, they're standard HP servers, so, but we thought, when you see a number that big coming up, when we go to pay for these in the next month or so, that it might be helpful just for you to have a little background on, on what's going on with these, so.
How long's it been since we've had those updated?
These are, well, at least like 2000, maybe 2014?
Okay.
So it's been probably.
Because 15 was the construction.
Right, and they were here before that, so.
Six, eight years.
Thirteen or fourteen. I, I recall them having to clean out the dust from the construction dust when we moved them into here, I mean, they, people were talking about it, it was before I was even here, so, yeah, but they've held up really well, they've, they've done, knock on wood, they've done really well.
Are they general purpose servers, like file servers?
Yeah, just general purpose servers.
Web servers?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're actually, what we're purchasing are three big hosts, you might understand this in, in terms of, we're virtualizing all our servers, so we probably have 30 or 40 actual servers within these very large devices, so it's all virtualized. All state-of-the-art kind of stuff, it's really, it's really quite good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So discussion only. So that wraps up the action items, now we go to committee reports.
I have a quick question about the, the new equipment coming into the athletic, or into our.
Fitness center?
Fitness center, yes, thank you, athletic center, yes, fitness center. Is that, is it used, is it, is it going to be?
Brand new.
Brand new, brand new. We're going to get some years out of those, huh? We'll get some years out of those.
Yes, yeah, yeah, a lot of other, because leaving this, like.
Yep.
Thirty years.
Thirty years, and it was used at that time, right?
Okay, so we'll start with the Bensonville Committee Foundation?
Nothing new to report, we have our meeting tomorrow, so.
Yes, did I hear something right, where Subaru was donating some more money?
They did, I, I think we noted that at the last meeting?
Okay.
That they donate another high amount. I can't remember the amount now, I want to say it's another sixty, some.
Yeah, we're not sure, but I know that tomorrow they'll discuss some disbursement of grants using those funds.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you. DI Committee, we don't have any updates. Finance facilities, we probably bore everybody to death on that, so we'll skip that. ISB, I do have an update for everybody. So we did have a executive meeting in June, June 21st, so it was a DuPage Executive Committee Planning Meeting, it was in person, it was in Lombard, our home office there. You know, we have the triple I coming up here in November downtown, right? We also discussed the fall 2021 and spring of 2022 member dinners that we attended, just went over, we really had a lot of good responses as far as the, the, the programming as well as the, the dinner. So those surveys went out and, and we had really good attendance. Then we discussed planning for 2022 fall and 2023 spring member dinner topics and, and the venue as well, so that's going to be deter, to be determined, we're still exploring that. Lastly, the, the big news is our DuPage Field Director, Dee Molinari, her last day was July 23rd. So we'll look to having a new field director hopefully soon. And that's all I have for you guys.
I got one for you. Kit directed me to, to complete the school board governance recognition application?
Yep.
That has been completed, thank you, Mary, tennis for helping me out with that, we will share that with the Board after this meeting, we need to submit it no later than Monday. This application's really good for the Board, it just shows how effective folks are, other Boards in Illinois in regards to governance, you guys have done a great job, and there was a lot of examples and artifacts to document the great work we have done here at Fenton. So, once again, I'm going to share it to you, and we will submit, we need Kit's signature before we submit it, just wanted to make sure we don't.
Okay, right on.
Yep.
Kit, I also wanted to, I just looked it up, just as an FYI, Grant Subaru donated 65,000 to the Bensonville Community Foundation this year.
Yeah, that's substantial, and we, we're confident it's going to go into the community's hands, and hopefully some of it goes to Fenton as well.
I was thinking that maybe they would want to fund a new tennis court.
Well, that's maybe what the Fenton Foundation can do, get that fund.
That is accurate, we're working on foundations part of the strategic plan, but we do have a, a, a relationship with Subaru, as you know, they sponsored an activity at the Kermess last spring, and we are inviting all of our partners, all of our business partners, part of the Career Pathway Initiative for breakfast, okay, this is the first time Michelle Papa Niklau, Sam, and Kit are going to lead that charge to fight them and try to find out ways and means to expand our program and to build relationship and rapport with them.
Great, sounds good, Lynn?
Nothing to report, we had no meeting.
Ned said?
Nothing to report, next month.
And Board Policy, nothing to report. So, that'll be it. The next Board meeting is Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM with a tentative Board Policy Meeting scheduled at 6:00 PM prior to the regular meeting. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Can I get a second, okay. First John and then Sylvia, then we have a good evening, everybody, and good night. Oh, yeah, that's it. Roll call.
Roll call.
That's right. I'm so excited, I'm so excited. Roll call, please, Mary.
Yes. Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes. Now, now we can say goodnight. Thank you, guys.